City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1426. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, let's go to start with item number one on the agenda with the clerk, please call the roll.
Adams, Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Yep, here.
Harrison.
Yeah.
Oates, here. Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Yeah.
Alright, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Adams.
I make a motion, excuse Councilmember Adams.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? Hearing none, we're gonna go on to item number three, which is presentations, and we don't have one. So we're gonna go on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council, or to ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So at this time, if anybody would like to address council, you can come up to the podium directly, write your name. It should be a sign-in sheet up there as well. And then, you can address council on anything that's of interest.
Hello.
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 My name is, excuse me, my name is Alisa Clayton, and I'm on fourteen forty West Kemper Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, apartment one oh five. My concern is the crosswalk between Kemper and Kara Hill, right across the street from Kemper Metal Park, right at the sign, the stop sign, since it's now closed. My son, Mordecai Evans, was hit by a car in the crosswalk area on the thirtieth of November of this year, around five, between five thirty and five forty-five. It was a cloudy day, so it was darker than normal around that time of day. And I will let him get into more detail about how that happened, and what his experience was like. But it is a major concern, especially in that particular area, because since it's so dark, it is past the school zone, so there's not really a lot of streetlights there to light up the area, so it's pretty dark in that area. Also, there aren't any precautions as far as like speed bumps. However, I do know about the speed bumps on Waycross, closer to Mill, where the residential area is, closer to the old section, the K section over there. Also, to bring up another situation, the very last day of school, last school year, there was a fatal accident, if I'm not mistaken, a young lady, a toddler, if I'm not mistaken. It was a lot of commotion, so when I went to the school to go pick up my children and handle some business there, I had to go all the way around because the area was blocked off, because it was so bad. Another thing I will say about that particular area is that people have a habit of speeding in that area, a lot. So much to the point where I was driving in the daytime, I was driving in the daytime, I hit between Norborn and Kemper. I'm at the stop sign for a good five seconds, a car goes around me through the stop sign, so. And I also, me living on West Kemper at the Remington Place Apartments, I have to make a right turn. Every time I approach the drive-through or the driveway, I slow down at least five hundred feet before I hit that mark. People speed, people go around, so that's also something to say, well, maybe there needs to be not only more light, but something that tracks the speed, to say, hey, you need to slow down. I don't know what they're called, but kinda like a meter to say, you're going thirty-six miles or thirty-eight miles instead of the thirty-five miles per hour. So I will let my son, are you, you wanna speak about your situation? Or your experience? Okay.
You can go right up to the podium. Yeah.
No one will take care of him. And also, while he's approaching, I would like some feedback as far as what the steps that are gonna be taken to get this rectified as soon as possible. And before I forget, I did speak to his coach, Coach C, and I do believe that he told me that there was another incident similar to my son's. So it's not just, it's a reoccurring thing.
My name is Mordecai Evans, I live on eight nine five Grant Lane, and I'm here to talk about what happened, how, I'm here to talk about how I got hit by a car. So after school, I had went to-
Can you speak up a little?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Just lean into the mic, the mic should be on, because we get it for the camera as well, for residents.
Do I have to say my name over again?
No.
Man, to talk about what happened after I had, what happened, how I got hit by a car after school. So after school, I went to tutoring, and then after tutoring, I went to go to track practice, because I'm a track athlete. So after track practice was out, it was pretty dark outside. It was around the time of five, between around the, towards the time of five, closer to six o'clock. So I was walking, I was walking to go back home to the apartments, that's where I was staying with my mom at the time. And I was, it was like really dark outside, and I had hit that crosswalk of what she was talking about. And I was walking across her, and I always look before, both ways before I walk. I didn't have any headphones on, so I was aware of my surroundings. So as I was walking towards like the end of it, kinda towards where near that park is at, I was like about to get to finish walking, a car comes and hit me, like, it doesn't hit me like, it doesn't hit me fast. When it hits me, it's like an impact hit, like you just stop, you hit it, it's something like pushed you. So I had got up and I had made sure, because I had a backpack on, so I kinda, the backpack kinda took most of my hit. But it did injure a part of my knee, which is fine now, I'm able to walk, I'm all cool. I went to physical therapy and they said I should be fine, which is good news.
Nice.
And I had walked home, I was limping home, because my knee was like, it was, it was hurting a lot. But I was able to get back home safely, and after that, we had went up here, over there to file a police report about the incident, because it was a hit-and-run. The car did not stop to check up on my safety. And after we filed the incident report for the hit-and-run, we had went to the hospital, and then once we got in the hospital, they had checked me out and did the correct health caring on my knee, which is good. Uh, we went home, did the treatment, and for the past couple weeks, I've been getting better and I'm all cool now.
Thank you for telling your story. It's very important that we hear that.
I wanna make sure I wasn't leaving anything out in regards to that. But like, like he did state, he is a track runner, and one of the concerns that the physician did have is, you know, if he's into sports and that ligament in his knee gets injured, he's pretty much done for. So that, not only the fact that, you know, it was his safety, but also, you know, he's he's interested in things, he's trying to do things, extracurricular activities. He's not in trouble, he wasn't like he was out doing something he wasn't supposed to do. And to add on to that, since he was at an after-school program and tutoring, we also have to keep in mind that there are also other activities that go out past seven o'clock, eight o'clock, due to orchestra. My daughter, she's in orchestra, so sometimes the kids, they do walk home. She works at Papa John's, so she walks down the street. Of course, I pick her up at night, but she walks down the street to go to work, so sometimes it could be getting to that time where it's starting to get dark because of the time of the year. So I just wanted to also add that in. Did you have anything else that you wanted to say? Okay.
Hi, my name is Abigail Evans, and I do wanna speak about my experiences on the crosswalk. I cross that walk almost every day. And some months ago, while school was in session, I was walking home, and there weren't, there were some people around, like kids walking home from school. So I was at the intersection, and a car, a white car, and a grown man in the car stopped right where I was, like at where you stop to turn across to the other street. And he took pictures of me. And at first, I didn't know if he was taking pictures of me specifically, he could have been taking pictures of the house behind me. But then he, he turned again, and he stopped, this is the intersection, he stopped right here, and he took some more pictures of me. And then I walked home after that, and then after that, I kinda took a different route after. And then I started working at Papa John's, and some, how many weeks? Yeah, a couple weeks ago, I was walking to work, and I was going across at the first part of the intersection, because I saw someone coming, and I didn't wanna get in their path, right? So a car drove right up to me and stopped, and the person in the car beckoned me towards them. And I just pretended I didn't see them, and I kept walking forward. But I just feel that those are situations of concern to me, because of that intersection that keeps on happening, things like that. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Well first, allow me to say, Ms. Clayton, we, we don't, you know, obviously, we don't control the actions of individuals, but on behalf of the City of Forest Park, I am, I am sorry that this happened to you, Mr. Evans. I'm sorry that this actually happened to your family. It looks like you're doing everything you're supposed to be doing. Kids got a job, they're going to tutoring, they're involved in sports. And things like this, quite honestly, should not happen. So allow me to say that officially. The other thing, I do need to know, just a few questions, if you were able to get the driver's information of any of those incidents? And at Kara Hill and Kemper, the direction that you were moving, so were you crossing over Kara Hill, or were you crossing over Kemper when you were hit?
It was over Kemper, towards Kemper Meadow Park.
Oh, towards the, okay, so towards the park, okay. I just, I have maps put up here, and I'm trying to think, because there are things that fall under our purview, and things that, that aren't, obviously, you know, drivers driving recklessly is something that we can address, but signage and infrastructure is also something that we can address. Now, there is a light there, and you said it's dark regularly?
Yes, it's dark, so like, just imagine within that area, going towards Whitewood School.
Right.
You're not quite in the school zone just yet.
Yeah, yeah.
But once you get in that school zone, it's, it's a bit brighter over in that area, and especially within the area of poker, and out in the pavilion, across the street from Whitewood School.
Yeah. Okay, so what I can say is, you do, you did mention that we are adding speed bumps, and you saw the ones on Waycross, but we can, if you're talking about steps, next steps that can be done, the city manager will look into putting speeds, speed humps also on that street, but then also, if I'm thinking about, when you said it's dark, since there's a light there, I think we also need to call Duke Energy to see if that light is functioning properly as well. Because even though, you know, streetlights are here, electricity is really Duke's game, you know? The city can officially call Duke, tell them to change light bulbs, and we just need to make sure that our infrastructure is, you know, being regularly updated like that. And then, I think also, we should look into speed radars, because people do speed on that street. We do. Something that will list not only the speed limit, but then people listing, detecting people's speed. Is that something that we can look into, Don?
Yeah, after Councilmember Clark brought this to our attention last week, the last council meeting, she mentioned it, and I had, I brought it up at our staff meeting. And I spoke with Scott, our Public Works Director, and he's already determined that we need another, we need more signage there, and we need a lighted sign around where it says, "Crosswalk, we need that." So we're looking, I'm not gonna say it's order, but that's what he's getting. This is a start, and then we're gonna look at the traffic through there as well. And you're absolutely right, we need to slow it down through there. But that, we wanna mark that sidewalk and that area a lot better with a lot more signage that, that has lights on it, like the, where you walk across the street there, it's got the crosswalk sign, that's not lit. We can put one of those ones that's lit up on it with a solar panel to keep it lit all the time, or at least in the evening, so people can know it's, and then to, you know, there is, there is a couple lights there, at least one.
There's one right here.
I think maybe one more as well, but you're right, it is dark. And so we're gonna look at it, and I think all those things that you just mentioned are exactly what we need to do. But your daughter's description of what's going on with her, that's a little, that's a lot more disturbing, that's not just signage, that's a lot, that's different. And I would say that for you folks, and for anybody that's watching, if something like that does happen, use your phone, call nine-one-one. Get a description of the car. We have flock cameras throughout the city, and we'll be able to find, if that car has a license plate, we'll be able to find that car. And track down the people that are, that are doing that. And, and so we gotta get a good description and a time, and something like that, but if you get a good description of the car, and the time that it happened, we can, we can work backward and find those vehicles. Now, a lot of times, these cars are stolen. That's probably what happened, you know, with the other, a lot of folks are, there's just so many stolen vehicles, the key is in the Hyundays now, that, you know, there's just a lot of joyriding going around, but you're right. I've driven down there, right by where you'd say you slow down, and people have gone around me, because I'm doing the speed limit. And so I know exactly what you're talking about, and we'll take a look at it, we'll try and slow it down. And I, you know, I appreciate you being here and telling us your stories, because it's, unless we know about it, we really can't fix the problem. But yeah. First start will be a lighted crosswalk sign. I think another, see if we can get another light from Duke. And then work to get the traffic slowed down, either through increased enforcement, have a, have police running radar through there. And I do, and one of those signs, it talks about, again, with the solar panel, that says, hey, slow down. So that's kinda what the list is right now, so. But thank you for coming, and we hope to have that taken care of as quick as we can. Okay.
Yeah, really, thank you for coming. I mean, Don said it best, if, you know, you don't come in and tell us, half the time, you know, we wouldn't know about it. So, but in terms of next steps, we are gonna contact Duke about another light, add reflective signage. Maybe we can also put some more police presence there.
There's no doubt, yeah. With that, the second thing that's happening, that's definitely, that's just not speedy, that's, that's-
Yeah, and then we'll run radars over there as well, but, you know, government moves a little slow, so give it some time to see if there are any improvements, improvements being made, but then continue to come back, you know, and keep us updated.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for having the courage to even talk about what was happening. It's very strange and probably very unsettling. Please make sure that you are telling administrators over at the school as well, because that most likely is not going to be the only intersection that he's going around taking pictures. And make sure that you always have your camera out as well, and that you are, that you, you have your ability to do so as well, okay? And as best you can, if you're able to walk with anyone, leaving or going in the same vicinity, or something like that, please try. We're definitely gonna work on it. Thank you so much for bringing this to us, and I'm so sorry, and about the other track, the track student.
Looks good, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're looking, you're looking good.
You're still fast. You're still fast.
He may not want to test it just yet.
What, what do you run? Long distance, oh, okay, what was your time?
For one mile.
What?
You don't look that fast, I touched you.
Very nice.
I'm just playing, why?
Takes me like seventeen minutes.
We hope we're gonna see you in Olympics one day, right? Alright, alright, we do pride ourselves on being a safe community, so reporting this is gonna continue to keep us safe, so thank you for that, though.
And on your way, I said this to another individual last week, had some issues, but don't, don't take any shortcuts through the woods, or anything like that, around, down in there. You can cut down through there sometimes. Stay on, stay on the street, stay on the sidewalk, stay in the lighted areas, and, you know, just, you just never know.
And if at all possible, try and walk with somebody if you're gonna be out, you know, at some odd hour coming home.
Alright.
Thank you, Anessa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so that concludes item number four on the agenda, communications from the public. So moving on to item number five, which is reports from standing committees, and we're gonna start with Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any, any reports. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Jones, so I guess I don't need to add that to the work session again. So we're good to go on that. I do, however, have one other thing, Mr. Mayor. You know, on, in November, we had a very, people were very interested, and at the polls, and people made their voices heard in some ways that we are, we are pretty excited about. Issue two, of course, passed with almost sixty percent of that vote. And what that supported was the legalization of recreational marijuana use for adults twenty-one years of age older. That also allowed for them to cultivate, to process, sell, sell, purchase, possession, possess, and grow them in their home. And so that is being, that is being looked at at the state level. They are looking at taking that from twelve plants in the home down to six. That is still being worked out. The Division of Cannabis Control, created under this initiative, is responsible for regulating and licensing marijuana operators and facilities, and is responsible for overseeing the compliance and standardization of cannabis businesses and production in Ohio. However, licensing for distributing facilities is expected to be completed next year, in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. So we are not quite there yet, even though we've, we've made these votes on it. I would like to have on our next work session a discussion about the dispensing of cannabis for recreational use. Not wanting to thwart or usurp any voters, of course, but simply wanting to give us a little more time while H.Bill eighty-six is, until it is fully realized and understood. Regulating their desire for cannabis is not the goal here, but I am extremely concerned about our city's lack of ordinances surrounding business expectations and regulations with the dispensing for recreational use. And with guidance from our state government not being all the way there yet, we don't want to try to build a plane as it flies. In addition to that, we've got homegrown, home growth oversight that needs to still be decided upon, and so social equity issues. So I'd like for that to be on the, on the docket for discussion as well, and how we can make sure that we are moving in the right direction, and making sure we're in alignment with what the state is agreeing on.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as boards and commissions, we're gonna pick that back up in the new year, since we're about to go recess and with the holidays and whatnot. Just, just a bit of safety concerns for our residents, once again, our police have said, just watch with running your cars in the morning without your, you know, you buy them. I know it was getting cold, it got cold today, and I'd like to get a nice warm car, however, once again, like we heard with the young man, you know, people do take cars. And we don't want anybody going to this, you know, our police department saying their car is missing because they have the keys in the car, so just be careful with that. As far as work session, I have nothing right now. Like I said, we'll pick it back up in two thousand twenty-four. And before I go, I'd have to wish a happy Charter Day to the men of the Cincinnati Alumni Chapter, the Capital Society Incorporated. The Cincinnati Alumni Chapter was founded on this day, December eighteenth, nineteen twenty-three, so they're celebrating one hundred years of active service to the community, so thank you.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Moving on to first, Vice Mayor Holt.
I don't have a report, I would just like to wish all of the citizens a blessed, happy holidays, and be safe out there. I don't have anything to add to the report.
Thank you for that. Moving on to second, Vice Mayor Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
Alright, do you have any work session items?
No, I do not.
Alright, thank you. And moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mayor, I do not have a formal report, but also just a ditto on wishing our residents a Merry Christmas, be safe. Let's move toward our new year of two thousand twenty-four, ready for prosperous.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Do you have any work session items?
No, sir.
Alright, that concludes item number five on the agenda, which is reports from standing committees. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. I do not have an official report, but I do want to thank all of the residents for coming out to every single event that we have had throughout the year. The tree lighting ceremony was also very well attended, and we wanna thank all of the residents, and all the kids who wrote letters to Santa. We will be sure to send those letters off once we, once we conclude this council meeting, actually, because council will be going on recess. So the only thing I wanna say is continue to come out, continue to tell us exactly what you, what you want to see from your local government, and please continue to support all this community events. So happy holidays, happy new year to everyone, and I do not have any work session items to add. And with that, that concludes my report. So moving on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report, Don Jones.
I'll try and keep it quick as well, it's again Merry Christmas and Happy New Year for everyone. We won't see anybody till after the new year, but I do wanna remind everyone our garbage schedule. It's, it's every year, the holiday schedule involves changes to garbage. So the garbage pickups on Christmas Day, on Monday, there will be no garbage pickup. So everything will be moved forward one day, so if your garbage pickup day was Monday, it moves to Tuesday. If it was Tuesday, it moves to Wednesday, it moves all the way to Friday, it moves to Saturday, so everything's one day, one day forward. And that's the same as on New Year's as well. New Year's Day is a Monday. There won't be any garbage pickup on Monday, so again, if your garbage day normally would have been Monday, it'll be picked up on the second of January, so just move that forward, let your friends and neighbors know. So you guys get your garbage out, it's some of the busiest days of the year for garbage collection, with all the presents and everything else, and all the parties going on. Make sure that you get your garbage picked up and on the proper day, so let everybody know that. And other than that, I hope everyone has a great and Merry Christmas.
Alright, and Don, is the city having any location for people to dispose of trees?
Yes, well, it'll be the same as last year, at the, the park up here, Kemper Metal Park. And I don't have the exact dates, but it'll be after, after then, obviously after Christmas. Yes, it'll be doing it again this year, same as last year.
Alright.
Pull the lights off, get everything off of them if you can, and then bring them out.
Alright.
And we'll make sure they're chopped up and crunched up and disposed of properly.
Alright, and that concludes item number seven on the agenda, city manager's-
I will remind everyone, since it did snow today, one of the questions we had, Mr. Shakespeare, last, last week, at the last council meeting, and I wanna remind everyone that the best thing they can do for us is to get your cars off the street. You know, if you think it's gonna snow, or it looks like it's gonna snow, or it has snowed, get your cars in the driveway, get your neighbors' cars in the driveway, talk to your friends and neighbors so that those box trucks really just go right up and down the street, and it makes it a lot quicker, everybody gets to, get to the streets quicker. So that's the best thing you can do for us, is get those cars off the street.
And that helps with the pre-treating as well, it's not even just the shovels, but yeah.
We pre-treated, we did, did a little pre-treating today on the, on the overpasses and the, and the main tracks through here, because even though the snow was not expected to stick, when it melts in- even though the snow was not, uh, expected to stick, when it melts tonight, it will be slick, so those, those streets have been pre-treated.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, Don. Moving on to item number eight, which are other reports, we're gonna start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple matters, uh, I reviewed the contract proposed for administration of Cobra benefits, uh, and I also, uh, reviewed and, uh, talked to Mr. Falkowski about some issues with cleaning services at the senior center.
Okay.
Other than that, I have nothing to report, I would answer any questions that you may have.
All right, does anyone have any questions for our law director? All right, moving on to our other report from our clerk of council, Mr. Kia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report that ordinance numbers forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three and fifty dash twenty twenty-three and resolution numbers forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three and forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Uh, this is the point in the agenda where the sausage gets made, so if anybody has to leave, go do dinner or anything like that, we're more than welcome to stay. Um, but it's gonna be a little bit, uh, all business from here on out, so. Okay. All right, again, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, so moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders, is there a motion? Uh, Councilmember Sylvester.
Motion to increase the, uh, discrepary investment, uh, management limit to, uh, at fifteen million and the state Ohio limit to thirty million.
Second, star. Is this will be state of star?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, star Ohio, but, yeah.
Star, Ohio, limit to thirty million.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving on to item number ten, which is new business, and I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three and fifty dash twenty twenty-three by title only.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Just that these ordinances were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes six to zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, uh, motion for ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Yes, on this, uh, ordinance, uh, we have a, a proposed twenty twenty-four, all the budgets are structurally balanced. Uh, the projected revenues are forty-five point seven mil, with the, uh, projected expenditures at, uh, forty-four point seven mil. And the, uh, the projected surplus for year two thousand twenty-four will be seven hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, twenty twenty-four recommended budget contains capital improvements in the form of our street improvements, uh, around Sand Road, Ken Road, uh, along our Library Road, equipment maintenance. We have new, uh, phone systems, police in-car cameras, uh, police, uh, radio, Public Works Road, uh, patching equipment, and our land improvement, City Hall and Central Park parking lots, um, City Hall water fountain, stormwater improvement and building improvement, City Hall and Police Department roof, our fire station forty-two, and our senior center flooring and, uh, furniture. So other capital items include demolition costs, uh, land bank costs, economic development, business retention, and incentives. Uh, these are key, uh, projects will be remained in the same level of expenditures, uh, in two thousand twenty-four.
All right, thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Sylvester. Really quick, if you could just read the first line again for that ordinance about the proposed twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, all funds budget is structurally balanced.
Structurally balanced, and then the end line says we have a project, or a projected surplus, correct? Just, just throwing that out there for residents, that we are balancing the budget, and we're still saving you money, and we have not raised taxes, just throwing that out there for residents again, we have a projected surplus, good work, Don.
And I've done more this year.
And, uh, with that, um, will the clerk please read, uh, call the role on the motion to adopt?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. All right, ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three passes six to zero. Uh, will the clerk please read ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty-three and ordinance amending appropriation for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, is there another motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, a motion, ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
That this is the, uh, interview, uh, reappropriation ordinance that is necessary to help us keep our expenditures in line with our budget. With that, I motion for ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty-three passes, I need another motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three and forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three by title only.
Second.
Moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Just that these resolutions were posted six days prior to this meeting.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes, will the clerk please read resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, a motion, uh, resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
It's, uh, this resolution is a proposed salary resolution that covers employees uh, for the City of Forest Park that have been scheduled and budgeted for an across-the-board adjustment to the salary schedule. Um, this include our non-union employees, uh, at a two-point-five increase, our fire union at two-point-five increase, Public Works Union at two-point-five increase, and our police union at a two-point-five increase. And with this, uh, I motion for resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Our resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three passes, will the clerk please read resolution number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three by title only?
Resolution number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for professional services related to the city's vacant and foreclosed property registry.
All right, is there a motion, uh, first Vice Mayor Holt?
I move for adoption of resolution number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, the city was, um, previously contracted with Pro Champ, Pro Champs, um, which specialize in service in local communities and per- performing such tasks as the tracking or foreclosures, notifications, or registration requirements, and collection of fees. Pro Champ has since closed earlier this year, and the city manager has solicited proposals for services and has recommended Hira Property Registry LLC as the best choice. And I move for adoption of forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
All right, resolution number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three passes. All right, um, next line item, uh, I need a, uh, well, actually, this would be me. So I motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a new liquor license for, um, cap retail LLC doing business as Joe's Quick Mart's. Um,
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes. I have one. All right, and then, uh, I make a motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the-
Excuse me, I have a question about that, so this is just a change of hand, it's nothing new than like getting a new license, just changing.
No, this one is a new, this one is new, the next one is actually a change of hand for, um, Cancun.
I read that incorrectly.
Okay. Oh, you, you got it mixed up?
I did mi- I did read this incorrectly.
All right, um, point of order, um,
Sorry about that.
We need to readjust the vote, would you like to change to no?
I would, please.
Okay.
And so would I.
Oh, okay, all right, um.
Why don't you just do revote?
Yeah, I was just, I was about to say, I, that's gonna, go throw some things. Yeah. All right, um, okay, so again, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna re, I'm gonna make the motion again so everyone understands. So I make a motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a new liquor license request for cap retail LLC doing business as, uh, Jones Quick Mart's. So, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, okay. All right, so then all those opposed, let it be known by the sound of voting nay.
Nay.
Uh, may I say something?
Okay.
Um, we're only permitted to object to liquor license under certain statutory, um, purposes.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what the statutory purpose would be if we file an objection.
Yeah, actually, um, that was my question as well, because then, considering we are down a council member, um, what would be the parliamentary procedure for, uh, actually a, a tie? And, um,
I- i- if the negatives, uh, prevail, then clerk would have to notify the liquor department that we are objecting, though scheduled for a hearing.
Mm-hmm.
If we come up with a statutory reason, we can go to that hearing, if not, we'd have to dismiss the appeal.
Right.
Just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Well, yeah, right, and that's why I'm, I'm, that's the next step, but technically, since Councilmember, uh, Adams isn't present, that makes three ayes and three nays, so it's actually, we still do have, go to the next step. So, all right, so the motion fails then, so, um,
So the motion not to object fails, so that means the clerk has to follow objection.
Has to follow through, yeah, so clerk will have to object.
Because isn't it my understanding that no more licenses were supposed to be permitted?
I don't think this is a new license, this is an extension of the time of operations.
It, yeah.
And it's, and it's in the permitted area as well, it's north of, uh,
That was, that's what I was gonna say.
It's north of two seventy-five, it's the old, it's the old BP station up there.
It's got the term new.
Okay.
That's because that's what they put on their application.
Think that's the throw-off.
They're just extending the time to one AM, but that's what they put on their application.
But they used the term.
So I had to use the term new because their application said new.
So that's the throw-off.
They have a license already.
Okay.
But they're just, but because they're changing their whole name?
And, um, if, I don't know, I think I put it in there.
Changing the time, okay.
Um, are they just, they have to, so when they apply, they have to say, they can say new, but their application is really to extend how long they're actually selling liquor.
Well, it's a new license.
Okay, you have to-
It's not a new business, it's a new license.
They previously had a license, correct?
Yes.
But it just limited them at a certain time.
So why can't they just renew the license that they have?
Pardon?
Why can't they just renew the license that they already?
This is a new license, right now, um, their license requires them to terminate sales under C-one, C-two earlier than what they're requesting, they want to stay open to one AM.
Oh.
Okay.
What's their, what's their time now?
Thank you, Mr.
I don't know, did it say?
It didn't, but when I, when I gave the liquor license to the police chief, he was under the impression that they were already staying open to one o'clock. So he wasn't for sure as to why they sent the new one in.
Okay.
I feel like I probably called him.
Can this be resent and have the details?
Hmm.
We've looked into to make sure that we got full clarity on.
Well, at the, at the-
I don't, I don't have the, the request in front of me, but there's a time restriction and the holidays coming up in the council break, you'd have to have a special meeting.
You can still object, and then if we, it doesn't hurt us to object.
But at the, but at the same time.
We can always withdraw the objection, so, I mean, we can leave the vote three-three, make the objection, we can withdraw the objection.
No, but at the same time, I, I imagine, I don't want to speak for people, but I imagine some people were just, you know, confused about the location and the fact that they were thinking it was another license being permitted, but because this location already has a license, um, there's really no, there's no true change except for the time in which, um, they are permitted to sell, so I wonder if we make the motion again, if people will feel differently, since there's already a license there, and they're gonna have a license again. Um, but otherwise, this would cause a lot more, um, a lot more backtracking, um, than, than necessary, but I'm open to call it again.
So if I can just clarify, so are they wanting to serve alcohol or liquor up until one o'clock?
Correct.
So they're staying open already, but they want to serve, um, um, alcohol until one AM?
Package. And they're not serving it on premises.
Well, I'm sorry, package, yes, thank you for clarifying, yes, okay.
All right, uh, so I'm gonna call this motion again. So I move to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park, Ohio does not request a hearing regarding a new liquor license request for cap retail LLC doing business as Joe's Quick Mart's. There a second?
Second.
It moved improperly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Let it be known by the sound of voting nay. All right, motion passes. Um, so the next item is another motion, um, this one is a transfer, so I, I make a motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park, Ohio does not request a hearing regarding transferring a liquor license request to L-Nopal Cincinnati, Inc., doing business as L-Nopal. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, so, uh, I need a, is there another motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, uh, a motion to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
It moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
All right, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, now, I need a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to amend the agenda and take up at this times, time items H under new business, a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of liaisons to the following boards, commissions, and committees.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Actually, we needed to amend the agenda, because we do have to complete these board, um, committees and commissions, there haven't really been any changes, actually. Um, these are the committees that we were already sitting on. Um, so will the clerk please call the role on the motion to amend?
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, motion to amend passes, um, and then I make a motion that we approve, or actually, point of order, All right, motion to amend passes. Um, and then I make a motion that we approve, or actually, point of order. Because I'm making the appointments, can I actually make the motion? All right, I make a motion that we approve all the board or committee commissions and their appointees. There a second?
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded. Uh, like I, like I mentioned before, um, I can read off the boards and committees, but everyone does have it in front of them. Do you have any questions about your committee assignments or your positions? Are there any changes or recommendations? All right. Hearing none. Um, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion to appoint everyone back to their respective committee. Um, it passes. All right, and that concludes all the items on the agenda. So is there any other business to come before the body?
I have neglected to say happy holidays. Um, may everyone have a blessed and happy, safe holiday with your loved ones. Uh, I do want to also thank you tremendously to the staff and employees, um, our fire, police, and even the residents of our city. We've come out in a great way and built a lot of, um, had a lot of good times and, and very good engagement, and it couldn't have happened without some really strong leadership and, um, and, and folks on staff that have been working extraordinarily hard, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark, but that's why we have the, the reporting section, just throwing that out there. So is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, council meeting is adjourned.